All right, friends. Welcome, welcome. If you haven't done some of these quick questions with your tablemates, just feel free to answer one or two of them right now. Just share your name with the people at your table. What's a memory of Marlboro that makes you smile? And if you're willing and got a little bit of that bravery going on right now, what's an embarrassing moment from your school days? Not too embarrassing. All right. So hello and good evening. I want to thank you all very, very much for coming today. This is just like always wonderful to see a community come together and, you know, really, you know, practice these, you know, ideas of true communication and collaboration and working together. So welcome and thank you all for being here. My name is Scott. I am the facilitator for this evening. And just to give you a sense of what that's gonna mean tonight and what my role here is, is basically I'm just here to help this conversation be as smooth and beneficial as it can be. You know, I think we've all experienced those kinds of meetings, those town hall style meetings where people just stand up behind the microphone, say their thing, and then sit down and everybody either claps or boos. Right? That's not what we're going for here tonight. And so hopefully with this setup, we can help create a better discussion moving forward. All right? I will also help prompt you and guide you with some questions that are intended to open the discussion. Right? Not keep it closed down, not keep it shut down, but open it up. And then finally, my role here is really to help make sure that as many of the voices here that want to be heard and need to be heard get heard. So if you've got a great point that you're making and I feel like it's been, you know, pretty well communicated, I might bring you to a conclusion just so we can make sure other voices get heard. But I might also like try and encourage some people who haven't spoken up as much to speak. But you're also gonna be doing a lot of talking in these small groups and shifting things around. So goal is really, really, really make sure your voices get heard. All right? So that's what I'm here for today. I'm not a Marlboro resident. I don't have kids who go to the school district. I have no, no skin in this game, right? I live in Brattleboro. I love this area. I work in education and I work in facilitation. And so I think this is a very important topic, but I don't have any, you know, preference as to which way the community decision goes on this. All right? So first of all, I wanna know a little bit more about Marlboro. Cause I live in Brattleboro. I've lived there for about eight years now and I haven't spent a ton of time over here. So just a few people, tell me some of those favorite Marlboro memories that you have. Who's gonna be brave? Yeah.
Wayne in a giant inflatable avocado suit.
There's a wonderful story back there and I wanna hear more in some time. But like Wayne in a giant inflatable avocado suit. Love it. Who else? Favorite memory from this community? Yeah. All School Sings. Yes, All School Sings are the best. Yes. Welcome, welcome. We'll see if we can find you some tables and chairs. Maybe it's time to start moving the pizzas, much as that saddens me. Yeah. One final happy memory from Marlboro. Oh, yeah.
They used to do a lot of field research.
Yeah.
And two of my kids got to go to Costa Rica, which was things that they'd never be able to do anywhere else.
Yes, I love that. I love that. Excellent, excellent, cool. All right. So as we get started, I want to help set some expectations for what this discussion and what this meeting is. Because when we come to a place with different expectations, it's inevitable that some people are gonna be disappointed. So first of all, today especially, but even with this series of meetings, is not about reaching a decision. All right? This is not about reaching a decision. The decision will be reached in a ballot later on. Right? This is about creating a shared pool of understanding. Right? It's about making sure that everybody in here has a sense, has a basic understanding of where everybody else is coming from. Not about decision making. Okay? So if you walk away from here being like, oh, but we didn't agree on anything, that's okay. All right? Also understand that this is the first of three planned meetings. And this is intended to unfold over that time. And guess what? It can be kind of an uncomfortable and messy process. And that's okay. We're gonna make things broader and a little bit more messy before things start to come together. So if you leave today's meeting feeling even more unsure than you did coming in, great, that's okay. Live in that feeling, that's, that's all right. All right? Hopefully over the course of this, you'll come to a better understanding of where everybody else is at. All right? Today especially, we're talking about clarifying meanings. Right? We just want to understand. We want to understand what this challenge is, what the different sides of it are, and come to an understanding of where people's viewpoints are at. All right? We only have an hour and 20 minutes from here to do that. We're not gonna accomplish it fully. That's okay. This is a process. All right? So any questions about our expectations so far? Beautiful, thank you. All right. Community agreements. There's one big one that I really want us to have in our minds as we go forward today. This discussion, the whole broad thing, is us versus the challenge, not us versus them. Okay? What does that mean to folks? What's that mean to some of you? Yeah.
Be kind.
Yeah. Be kind, respectful, right? Yeah. We're, we're gonna have some different opinions and that's okay. And there are gonna be different ways in which we wanna come down on this issue and that's okay. But really the goal of this is this group and the broader community versus this challenge that sits in front of us. Right? It's not about one side versus the other, who gets to win. All right? Can we all get together on this? Anyone wanna challenge me on this? Anyone have deeper thoughts about this? Great, thank you. Um, next agreement, we're gonna listen to understand. And this brings up what you were talking about. We really want to understand what the people around us are saying, not just listening so that we can debate them, not just listening so we can argue. Just really try and seek to understand where they're coming from and what they're trying to communicate. Since we're not trying to reach a decision tonight, great. No burdens, no worries. We don't have to feel like we need to win the argument tonight. Just listen to understand. Cool? And finally, I'm gonna ask that you all speak from your own experiences. All right? It can be very tempting to be like, oh, I think the students will experience this. I think the teachers will experience this. I think the community members will experience this. All right? Please talk about what you are experiencing and what you think you will experience, right? We'd like to get all of those voices in here. And that can be the goal of future meetings. Let's get some of those student voices in. Let's get some of those staff voices in. Let's get everybody in here. All right? But for now, for tonight, speak from your experience. Sounds good? Great. All right. The structure. So like I said, there are three meetings. This is the first one. Tonight is gonna be largely based on creating shared meaning. We're gonna work in mostly these small groups, but we're gonna share out so we can bring together. We're gonna put some things, questions to discuss in the future so we don't have to worry that we have to address everything tonight. The next meeting, we're gonna take some of those ideas that came up tonight and really get into them. Right? That's when we'll start to really discuss in a lot more depth some of those ideas that have been generated tonight. And then the final meeting, we'll be really thinking about some of those long-term impacts of the decision that you all are reaching. Right? That's where we really start to think forward into the future. Okay? So don't feel like we have to do too much tonight. We have time. This is a process that we can spread out. All right? So a couple of tools. I love a good parking lot. Not in the outside, I like my trees outside. But in facilitation, I love a parking lot. Sometimes there are important questions that come up and they're just not the right question for the moment, but they're important questions for us to address later. If those come up and I like, oh, I wanna talk about that, but that's gonna be a 10-minute conversation away from what we're talking about, I'll put it in the parking lot and we can come back and address it later. We might have to come back and address it next meeting, but we will take care of it. All right? And then for the future, these are things that like, definitely next meeting or third meeting. Again, important to discuss, but not what we wanna talk about right now. Great? Okay. Any questions, any thoughts, any concerns that are sitting in, in your brains right now? Wonderful. All right. I'm going to assume that everybody is either feeling really good or so full of pizza that you're just blissed out and both of those are okay states to be in. So what I would like for you to do first, take 30 seconds and just think, what is your understanding of the question that brings us here together? What's your understanding of the question, the challenge that we're talking about tonight? All right? This was put together by the school board and we're gonna go into it in just a second. Don't worry, we haven't really done anything with it so far. So you're great. All right. Now that you've had that little time to think about what brings us here together, turn to one of the people in your group, not the whole group, just one person sitting next to you and talk about that. What do you, what is your understanding of the challenge that brings us here together? Wrap up your sentences. All right. Okay, so can I hear from a few, like maybe one representative from a few of the tables? What came up for you? What are you seeing as the challenge that sits before us?
People spoke to, um, people spoke to partners, not everyone, so...
Oh, you didn't hear me to bring it to the whole group? Sorry. Yeah, all right, that's okay. What did you discuss in your partners then?
Things that are coming up in terms of the challenge. Something that came up was it's not clear what the needs are.
Okay, yeah. What are the needs? Okay. Actually, I'm gonna put... Yeah, I'm gonna repeat things out and write them on the board as well. So one of the questions, one of the challenges that came out is what are the needs? All right? So in terms of the...
It seems like a pretty broad thing. What are the needs?
Right, and we'll get to that. Like we'll, we'll start honing in on some of these things. But yeah, let's, let's come to this idea of like, what is the broad challenge that's sitting in front of us? Yeah.
Whether or not it is removing the seventh and eighth grade from the school is the best thing for Marlboro.
Whether or not removing seventh, eighth is best for the schools.
Best for the Marlboro community.
Great, for the community. All right, variations on this, yeah. Talk to me.
The vision for the school as a whole is moving forward.
Yeah, what is the vision for the school moving forward? For the school as a whole? Did I get that right? Yeah. What else? What came up for folks? Yeah.
One challenge is that the culture of the school was very, very consistent for a long time. There was a long institutional memory. And in the last few years, it seems to me that that is all gone.
Okay.
Tremendous turnover of personnel and other factors.
Yeah, okay. Changes in culture is a concern.
Or an optimization. It may not be a concern.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's an observation though, that there seems to be a change in culture.
Great, thank you for that clarification, yeah. What else are we noticing? Folks on this side of the room, yeah.
The building is in need of renovation.
Yeah.
Costs are different for different models.
Building renovation with different cost models. Yeah. What else?
What I heard was that there was a challenge in terms of the communication around this and there's no clarity around what, what are we, what is going forward.
Yeah, yeah. Need for clarity around communication? Yeah. Great. Okay. So, yeah.
Just, I thought two things. One was the perspective of this conversation also happening 20 years ago. That this is a, you know, frequent community conversation. Still 20 years later, I have a dream on it, you know, so I know. And also the challenge of creating an equitable solution, not a pipeline of private schools that aren't available, like private school choice that isn't available to everybody.
Yeah. Equitable solutions around school choice, school availability? Great. Okay. So, yes. One and two.
I, I think there's a challenge, although I prefer to term it in the positive, an opportunity.
Yeah.
Around the ecosystem of the school and the community. I think COVID in particular caused a real disruption and challenge there. So I guess we can put that in the challenge category, although I think there's a, a big opportunity there as well.
Yeah. Great, thank you for that. Yeah.
I just, it seemed to me that the first challenge was to see what was best for those seventh and eighth graders.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So to see what is best for the seventh and eighth graders. Great. Okay, yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about a challenge of understanding who gets to decide?
Yep.
Whether or not the seventh and eighth grade is gonna happen. I guess who gets to decide and what's the progress?
Yep. Great. Okay. So we've got some great things coming up here. So let's see, and I'm gonna start to ask for the help of some of the school board members for like some of the very specific answers we can bring to some of this. So it seems to me, based on my understanding of it, is this question here with some of these tied in is kind of our core thing. So the building needs renovation. Is that something that like has to be done according to the school board and the things happening? Building has to be renovated. There are different cost models, right? For renovating for just AK through sixth school and renovating for AK through eighth school. Yeah? So depending on which renovation happens, will affect taxes, will affect costs, will affect the budget. And so one choice might be to remove the seventh and eighth grade and make those school choice, like the ninth through 12th already is. And that would come with a certain cost associated with it. And keeping the seventh and eighth in place, and that would come with a certain cost associated with it. Yeah.
I think, um, I would like us to return to why we came together to figure out the vision.
Yeah.
And then all the budgetary decisions flow from the vision rather than start with the building and then decide what kind of structure we want.
Yeah, so that's what we can figure out here today is, yeah. Do we move from coming from a place of vision? Do we move from understanding equity? Right? There are lots of places where we can come to this. All right? So next discussion for you to have in your tables, of these things that have come up here, whether removing the seventh and eighth grade is best for the community, the vision of the school and the community as a whole, the changes in culture, the ecosystem of the community, what's best for the seventh and eighth graders specifically, understanding the costs of the renovation models, the need for clarity around communication, the need for equitable solutions in terms of school availability, and who gets to decide these matters? So within your tables, talk about what are some of the priorities for you and why are those priorities? Right? You don't have to rank all of them in a particular order, but like what stands out to you as most important and most important to address first? All right? So in your tables, go ahead. Just to get a quick sense of where folks are at, I just want to first brush, get a show of hands. Who, who labeled this as a pretty high priority? Just a quick show of hands. Who labeled this first one? Whether or not removing seventh, eighth grade is a high priority.
Can we list that with best for the seventh and eighth graders?
Yeah, I, so let's, let's talk about this, okay? Cause this is an important point. Right? Is there a distinction to be made between what's best for the community and what's best for the seventh and eighth graders? Are those always going to be in sync or are they sometimes gonna be separate? Yeah. So one of the things to think about, and like I said, we're not always reaching answers tonight, but where are our priorities in this one? So, okay. So how many people roughly put this as a pretty high priority? Best for the community? Okay? There seems a third-ish, maybe to half? Show of hands, great.
Are we ranking here?
No, we're not ranking. We're just getting a sense of where everybody is feeling right now. Right? Um, vision for the community and school as a whole. Who put this? Okay, yeah, this came up as a pretty high priority for pretty much everyone. All right? Changes in the culture. A few smatterings here and there. Okay, great. The ecosystem of the community.
Can you clarify what that, ecosystem, what, how is that?
Yeah, this was yours, I think, ecosystem of the community? Yeah. Can you clarify a little bit? What came up for you about that?
The idea that, um, that this school is not just a service, but an ecosystem within our community, not in one part of our community, that we're all responsible for.
So, yeah. So understanding how the school fits into the broader ecosystem of the community and how it is interconnected with everything that goes on in this community at large and is reflected in the school? Am I correct in rephrasing that for you? Great. Cool. All right. Best for the seventh and eighth graders specifically? Great, okay. Seems like a little over half, maybe close to two-thirds of this. Great. Um, building renovation cost differences and understanding and working with that. Okay? A small handful of people, yep. Need for clarity around communication? All right? One person, one proud person, love it.
You choose, cause some of us were only trying to choose two.
Ah, okay, yeah, yeah. Funny that the clarity around communication was from my lack of clarity around how many you were able to choose. Nailed it, you got me on that one. Um, equitable solutions in terms of school affordability and availability? Yeah, looks like maybe about half roughly. Okay? And who gets to decide this matter? Okay, a couple of people. And folks on the Zoom, if you can just put into chat what some of your top priorities were of the things that came up and I will share them out. Yes?
I mean, affordability for school, equitable solutions, meaning school affordability and transportation.
Yep, okay, great. Transportation. Okay. So we've got what's best for seventh, eighth and who gets to decide as things coming up on there as well. Great. So as we move forward, since pretty overwhelmingly here, the one that came up as a top priority is our vision as a whole. All right? It feels like we're all, a lot of people are really feeling passionately about that. So let's focus the next part of our discussion on that. In your groups, and actually, let's pull this back to just a pairs discussion first. So just discuss this with one person at your table. Gut instinct, gut reaction, what is your vision for the Marlboro community and the school within that community? Does that question make sense? What is your gut reaction for a vision for the Marlboro community and the school within that community?
I have a gut feeling, huh?
Uh, I will give you about five... You know what? I'm gonna be generous and give you seven and three-quarters minutes to talk with your partner and then I'm gonna give you another five and two-thirds minutes to talk with the whole group. Um, I have a hand over here and then I'll, and then I got you, yeah.
So vision as a whole, do we see the seventh and eighth grade as part of the school or what do we want for our kids' vision?
Yes, that is an important discussion to have. I'm not gonna make that decision for you. You decide what you wanna talk about with that, yeah.
I was just wondering if it could be reframed a little bit.
Yeah.
Like a gut reaction when you hear it and then like maybe what would it be included?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause that would be like tangible.
Great. Yeah, if that feels good to you, you can talk about what would be included in that vision rather than specifically like what is your vision? If that helps you to get your head around, around the question. All right? Any other thoughts or questions? Thoughts or questions from the Zoom people? I'm gonna admit one more person. All right. So bringing you all back to a group, these are some of the things that came up on the Zoom discussion. We do have Zoom friends here, by the way, just in case you weren't aware. That's why I keep bending over a computer awkwardly. So some of the things that came up on there. A school system that values experience over product and having the uniqueness of a small school. What were some of the vision ideas that came up in your groups? Yeah.
Hands on learning, learning to think for themselves and then be able to communicate well and write well.
Hands on learning. Can you say the last one again? Or the, the last combination? Think for themselves and...
Think for themselves and then be able to communicate well and write well.
Think for themselves and communicate. What else? Yeah.
I think consistent programming or reliability.
Yeah. Great. What else?
A strong sense of responsibility for community.
Strong sense of responsibility for community? Yeah.
I'm just wondering when we use the word community, if, when people use that, if they could distinguish between the Marlboro Elementary School community and the community of Marlboro?
Yeah.
Because they're not necessarily the same thing.
Yeah, and, and actually like I love that because I was just thinking in terms of moving that ahead. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna quickly put into the parking lot a distinction between the two and let's talk about it cause I think that definitely needs to be addressed. But let's finish up this first if that's all right. So a distinction of the larger community versus the school community and how those tie together. One and then two.
One was investing in maintaining, um, passion and enthusiasm in teachers. And then the other was research-based decision-making about the type of model we design.
Investing in maintaining talented teachers. Oh, and passionate, yes, great word. And then research-based decision making? Yep. Yep. Research-based decision-making. Excellent. And then over here.
We talked some about the connections between within the school community and between older and younger students and also connections with the larger community.
Yeah, older and younger students. And then connection... And then connection. With community. I hope you all will forgive my handwriting, by the way, I'm trying to write rapidly, but, yeah.
We had a physically and emotionally safe environment.
Yeah.
That supports students as a whole. And equitable.
Physically and emotionally. Safe environments. Environment. Wow, spelling is completely out for me right now, that's okay. And then the last sentence, word you said, equity.
Support students as a whole.
Yeah. When you say support students as a whole, can I clarify, are you talking about like the whole student body? Or student, like a holistic approach to like the whole student thing?
Holistic approach.
Holistic, great. Great, other, yeah.
We kind of looked at it a little bit broader, but just talking about the uniqueness of the small size of the school.
Yep.
Supporting individual students. Just, you know, individual attention to the academics. And creating students that were. Very socially and developmentally well-adjusted.
Adjusted socially. Developmentally. Alright, yes.
We also talked about a school that supported teachers to be creative. And. To be able to pursue their passions and their vision.
Creative teaching. Great, I'm going to check back in with the Zoom real quick. I'm sorry, I can't always tell who is going to say what, but I will try and repeat everything that is coming up. Okay. Alright, so. I love this, this is wonderful. Now I want to bring it back to your point, because this is very important. In looking at this. What do you see, and we can talk about this as a whole group for now. What do you see as being a blend between a vision for your community of Marlboro? And a vision for the Marlboro school, whatever that looks like? Alright? How do those two things blend together, what comes up for you?
It's a small point.
Yeah.
It's not the community versus the school.
Right, right, you're right.
Can I just cross out the versus?
Awesome.
I was just saying, it actually looks like us.
Yes. Community with, community us. Love it, yes. My bad handwriting wins the day. Okay, yes.
I think that the part of that connection, right, is that the school has an incredible. An incredible ability over time to shape the community.
Yeah.
Because it can, you know, decide, people make decisions about where they're going to live based on schools. So I think that, you know, that, that relationship is.
Yeah, the vision, the, the place of the school to shape the community at large? Especially as it grows and it creates its future community members, but also as a school attracts. Community members who come from the outside, yeah.
I think it's important for the kids to feel like they're part of the Marlboro community.
Yeah.
And there used to be, pre-COVID, there was a lot of older adults that would come. And volunteer in the classes, and they would have relationships with them. And then also, like, they did something for Veterans Day, like, there was a lot of, like, back and forth.
Yeah, great, so bringing in the adults of the community, but the members of the community at large? Into the school and having those connections that form in both directions, yeah, great.
Yeah, how the story, David, did you do this? In the past, students, one year, went and interviewed people in the community about what they did. And made videos, those videos are still on YouTube.
Yeah. Excellent. Great, yeah. Those, those future projects, or those projects in the past that can continue in the future, yeah.
I was just going to say, just the school as a connecting hub of the community. My daughter was homeschooling for a few years, and I'm like, oh, such and such happened, so, so, not together, together, whatever, like, I don't know. You know, there's not many places in town to run into, to hang out with other adults, they're running to them, other than. School pickup and drop off and stuff.
Yeah, so the school as a, like, physical and social central hub for the community? Not just student to adult and student to student, but like, you all to each other, parents to parents, adults to adults? Those kinds of connections that can be built by having a strong school in place, yeah.
But how does that pertain to K through six versus K through eight?
Great, how does that pertain? How is, and this, this is ultimately where we're going to get that, and actually, you know what? I'm going to put that question as of our future, because that's the kind of specific question? That I really want us to get into in the second meeting, which, so we're going to remember that. By saying. How does? The difference between a K through six school and a K through eight school? Effect? How the vision for Marlboro and the vision for the Marlboro school fit together? Great. Okay, okay. How do the? Different? Models? Effects? This? Community vision? Great, thank you for that. Yeah.
I think that that should be more important, but I think as a point B, we do need to look at the different models of. Like financial sustainability as well.
Yep. So as a future idea, talking about what are some of the different models for financial stability? For the community and for the school district, okay? So coming back to this vision and the shared vision.
I had another comment about your part of the class.
Yeah.
And I'm glad the words just went away, because I feel like, here's that I spent working with teachers and children in school.
Yeah.
This was a place where children learned how to be in community.
Yeah.
With each other, with younger and older, the teachers, the bigger community, and that was a preparation for entering a community. In the communities Marlboro and beyond.
Great, can I put that on here? Because I love that for a broader vision of like, learning how to be in community? Okay. Yeah. So. One of the things that she was appreciating about what happened here is that in the schools, a big component of it? Is about students learning to be in community? And learning to grow to be part of community members, did I hear that right? Yeah, and so I asked if I could put that in the vision? As part of the vision for the school and the district as a whole? So learning? To be? In? Community. I'm going to take a quick check on Zoom to see, okay. Alright, any other thoughts, yeah?
I'd just like to add academic excellence to the vision.
Yeah. Great. Alright, what I'm going to do now is, I'm going to pull a couple of these and just like, ask you all to talk about them a little bit more? And see what pops up for you. This doesn't necessarily mean priorities or highest things, there's just some of the ones that stand out for me. I've mostly gone to big schools in my life. What's nice about a unique and small school? What do you like about that? What's valuable to you about having a small school? And please feel free to share out, yeah.
People noticed that something's wrong.
People noticed that something's wrong, I love that, yeah. What else?
Teachers have been able, again, speaking from experience, as per your guidelines? Are able, are better able to attend to individual kids' needs.
Yeah, teachers are better able to attend to individual kids' needs, they have a better contact and relationship with those kids.
That's similar to what I was going to say. But you get to know them from very young, follow them, so if you're a teacher of older students, as I was.
Yeah, you get to watch kids through the whole progression, they grow up, they're not just like a face in a sea, you know, of, of students, yeah. One and then two. Sorry, can you say it again?
Sense of ownership.
Sense of ownership, yeah, of your school and of your community, yeah.
I went to a very small high school, my class was 21 kids. And. I found, which I thought was good at the time, that all of us knew all the teachers, for better or worse.
Yeah.
And all the kids knew each other.
Yeah.
And we were sort of in the same social group even as classmates? Even if we were from totally different family backgrounds.
Yeah.
So I thought that was good.
Great, yeah, so like having that sense of knowing of each other? Like, it kind of ties into this building communities and tying in things, yeah. One then two.
I think, I think it goes back to the community thing that you lack of, you know, when you're in a smaller environment? Everybody has to, everybody has to sort of flex and interact with everybody else.
Yeah.
You don't have a choice, and so there's a, there's a muscle that you learn that in larger communities, where you're able to just sort of cycle to your, your group.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I like that.
Yeah, so, like, you are, you know, in larger groups, you're able to be like, oh, I don't get along with this person, I can just like, be away from them. Whereas in a small community, you have to learn that, you have to learn to get along with and interact and work with people? Who may not be your favorite person, and you build, like you said, those muscles, those social muscles, great, that, and then I have a zoom one.
I was going to say pretty much the same thing, but that troublesome person becomes your troublesome person.
Yeah.
Like they're part of your family, in a way, the wider thing.
Great.
And you, and, and you take responsibility for them in some way because of that.
Awesome, yeah, I love that, I love that, great. And then there's one over here that came up similarly, is children are be able, better able to have a closer connection with their teacher. Yeah, and so, yeah. Last one on this one, and then one more.
If a teacher is considered a high level of investment, because we feel like you have such an amount of impact on the school culture and on the families of students.
Yeah, high level of investment, high level of impact, you can see that impact, right, it's very direct, yep, I love that. Great. What about? Let's talk about this. Learning to be in community, this has come up a little bit with this smallness of school. And I would love to especially hear from some of the people who haven't spoken up today, if you're. Needing a little bit of encouragement to use your voice and be brave, I, I give you that now. What is it about learning to be in a community that is so valuable? And what is it that this school can help to do to create that? Again, just raise your hand and go for it.
Well, I think that, I think learning to be in a community is about developing a sense of place.
Yeah.
And I think right now, I think the sense of place is incredibly important for. You know, for young people in particular. To have an investment within a place that you can call home? Is incredibly important, and I think also, it's hard to see where we can make a difference? In the larger world right now? But if you have a sense of place, then you have a way to make a positive difference in a smaller place, which is your community. And that, right now, is probably the most important thing that I want to feel like young people have. Is an opportunity to make some positive difference in their own community. Where it's harder to see where you could do that outside of the community, and it's possible in a small community like Marlboro.
Yeah, I love that, I love that. So just to kind of summarize what she was just saying. By building a sense of community, it helps people, and students especially, find a sense of place. And the way I interpret that, that is maybe partly a sense of geographical place, but really more a sense of like. Community and this is our home, this is our place together. And especially in this day, when that sense of place becomes harder and harder to really grasp sometimes? Having a small community, having a well-built and well-connected community can become even more important. Did I get that right? Great. One and then two.
I think it allows her kids to develop empathy.
Yeah.
A lot being in small, like, or being connected to the community.
Excellent, building empathy. Yeah.
And I think in a small school, like, learning to make those community connections and take on different roles? You know, like, it gives you an opportunity to take on different roles as you get older and with different sets of people. Those skills, then they can apply, like, when they go out into the wider world, like, in a more, you know, they learn in a supportive environment, and then they can apply it when they go to bigger schools or work places and so on.
Yeah, so being able to find yourself in different roles and really develop your sense within those roles and have those skills as you move into the wider world? Great. Other thoughts around this, yeah? It happens all the time, don't worry. Do you want me to come back?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, one more, so, so the thought returns. Yeah.
I think this is similar to a lot of other people have said, but.
Yeah, that's okay.
I think that so many people I meet seem to be so, so cynical and so alienated. And I think that, that maybe the antidote is to that, is learning to be in a community.
Yeah, so as we feel a sense of cynicism and alienation in our broader world that we're living in? The tightness of a small community can help combat that. Got it yet?
Yes. So kind of going off of what Sophie said a minute ago. I think one of the gifts that people can take when they've grown up in a place like this, where you have the model of having a home? Is you can take that wherever you go, right? And so. You're going to establish a family and say, alright, you know, you belong to me however you are. When you go anywhere, wherever that is, college, or, you know, if you move elsewhere? Versus, let me see if you're my type of person first, I think. I've had examples of people doing that, and, you know, I wondered like, how did you, how, how did you accomplish that? And then, you know, coming to Marlboro, you see people who do it all the time, it's like, oh, you know, maybe that's how.
Yeah. Can, can I interpret that a little bit as in like? It better prepares folks to like, push through their comfort zone a little bit and connect with all people? Rather than just the people that, oh, like, you and I clearly get along alright, so I'll only hang out with you? And like, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like more of like an imprint model, rather than something you quote, learn, it's more.
Yeah.
Part of you having grown up here.
Yeah, so it's just deeply imprinted on you from just the experience of living here and growing up here, yeah, great.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a sense of agency you get?
Mm-hmm.
In, in this environment where you see the effect of what you're doing very, very clearly.
Yeah.
And you can, you can grasp it, you can grasp a problem.
Yeah.
And, and really, and the kids learn how to solve it, and, and the community immediately can respond. And I think to have that effect on a community is super important. That gets mirrored in a bigger community later.
Yeah. Yeah, by, by taking steps in a small community, you see the effects of your actions, you see the results of what you do? And that builds that sense of agency, that builds a sense of like, hey, I matter in this world, and the things that I do? Effect the world around me, which modeled and developed in a small community, hopefully then? Can prepare students and, and folks for being in larger communities as they step out now. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With greater resilience.
Yeah, and with greater resilience, excellent, excellent. Okay, I want to do one more of these, based on our time, because I want to respect everybody needing to like? Get kids and, you know, get non-pizza food in their belly, things like that. So, let's talk about? Some of these that, that tie a little bit together, so let's talk about how? The vision ties into the school staff? And how that works together, so that's both investing in maintaining and talented and passionate teachers? But also creative teaching bringing into that? And also not ignoring the fact that like, teachers bring that individual attention and individual responsibility? So, yeah.
Can I just add one more to that?
Please.
Because, I guess it's maintaining, investing in maintaining, but like. I like the word of supporting.
Yeah.
Or something like that, as far as the teachers feeling very supported by the whole school and the community.
Great. Helping teachers understand that like, we're not just hiring you to do a job, like, we are bringing you in, we are, you know, like, we're bettering. You as teachers and, and helping you do the best version of your job as you can?
Kind of, but it's more like, once they're here, actually making them feel supported.
Alright, once teachers are here, making them feel supported and, and a very present place, great, thank you for helping me clarify that. Alright, the importance of teachers in this vision, the importance of, and let's. Clarify and expand it to all school staff, because obviously it's not just the teachers who are part of your, of the kids' lives, but, yeah. But, yeah. Folks from more this area. Okay, sorry. Yeah, let me clarify. So, now, when we think about how teachers and school staff are part of this vision, and in particular, investing in supporting and maintaining talented and passionate teachers and encouraging creative teaching, why is that important? How does that tie into this village, village, appropriate, vision? How does that, how do we go into depth in that more? Did that clarify? You have a more confused look on your face. Is there? Okay. Yeah.
I'm just gonna, I'll build up the idea of agency that Janine brought up. I think that is, for me, part of the, you know, the magic there is that when you've got, you know, when you've got a small, you know, small school like this and that, you know, you can, you can lay out that vision, but allow someone to kind of figure out how they are gonna fit into that and build their own space there versus like filling up a position.
Right. So it becomes more than just filling a position on a job schedule. It's about like, how can you be a part of this broad, this broad community that we have?
You're creating something that's really like dynamic, almost, I don't know, hierarchical, you know, or you don't know necessarily what that's gonna be. But when you have the right vision and you connect the right person.
Yeah.
And you see, they're just growing it, right? And that's the, like, that's, I feel like, where the magic of a small space like this is.
Yeah, building a growing living system with excited, empowered teachers and staff in it. Yeah. Great.
I mean, I think, I think as far as like a school community, we should focus on like how we could like nurture teachers and provide the support that they can do that work, like, rather than like thinking like, oh, we could headhunt like really passionate teachers. Like I think it's a product of the environment.
Mm-hmm.
And like, you know, the individual.
Yeah, so the importance of nurturing and growing teachers present and who are already in this community rather than just going out and like hiring the best people with the best resumes. So we'll go, I think I saw one then two. And if I got that order wrong, I apologize.
Just sort of a, I don't know, virtuous cycle of, it should be appealing to teachers, to some teachers at least, to have this small class where you really can pay attention to every student. And my impression, certainly historically, has been that Marlboro's had that been a very attractive, known, good school. And that's both attracted teachers and, you know, parents of prospective students. So the part of us that maintaining a small school community should be attractive to teach, at least a lot of teachers.
Yeah, creating the small, having the small school community brings in the kinds of teachers who want to and contribute well to a small school community, which then in turn makes for a solid, strong small school community. Did I get that right? Great. Yeah, one and then two. That's great.
But something about giving teachers a sense of agency and freedom within the school, I think is also a good model for students. And teachers are gonna be more passionate too. It's, you know, more from them creating the school community with the support of others, if that makes sense, more of a bottom-up instead of top-down.
Yeah. Yeah. How can we nurture and support, create a bottom-up growth for, for school staff and teachers? Yeah. Great.
I think this is more a question.
Yeah.
But how do we, as a community, attract, in a school, attract this, this talent, this pool of teachers that pre-COVID was very interested in coming to the school?
Yeah.
We had a teacher in Guilford. He had applied for years to be a teacher here.
Yeah.
And it's all he ever wanted was to become a teacher. And he ended up leaving the state. You know, like, he, like, there, there's something happened between, like, prior to COVID.
Right.
And now, that, that makes it somewhat unattractive to be a teacher. And what has changed?
Yeah.
Like, how can we build that sense of, of, sense of community and sense of passion around being here in this place now?
Yeah.
Again, so we, so we can attract those people. And obviously, the prices on the houses is a huge factor. We are, we cannot house people here. How can we partner that with attract, like attracting talent and passionate people?
Yeah. Can I start to turn this into a question for our next time? Because this feels like a good, important thing for us to talk about. So maybe you all can help me formulate it into a solid question. Like, how do we nurture and develop educators in this community? No matter, or no matter what vision we go with moving forward, or how does the vision going forward affect how we nurture and develop school staff?
There's a cover from COVID. I feel like that was.
Yeah, there's a recovery period for sure.
And we can even phrase it of like, in a post-COVID or, you know, coming out of COVID. I know post, like, yeah, I got that. In the place we are now in terms of COVID, how does our community nurture and develop school staff?
Was it nurture and develop or did it attract?
Let's put all of them in there.
Nurture and develop kind of just to maintain or retain.
Yeah, let's put all three of those words over here so that we make sure we get them because they all imply different things and they're all valuable to talk about. So, in the current situation, how do we nurture, support, attract education staff? Okay.
I'm not sure it was gonna be too specific, but like, I'm also personally wondering how the decision, also decision by current staff.
Yeah. That is actually, I'm gonna put that, that's for our third meeting discussion because that's, that's more about that impact. But I'm gonna put it on here. So, how does this? Yes. So the question was, how does the decision that we're coming up against affect current school staff? And what I said is, that is actually for our third meeting where we really start to discuss impact. But I'm putting it up here for us to think about. And I'm actually gonna use that as our jumping off point for our last quick brainstorming session because we're at about seven minutes left. Quick thought as I turn the board around?
I think it's probably a future question.
Yeah.
But is there a specific number of students at the school who no longer financially buy, have, have the seventh and eighth grade?
Great. So that was, is there a specific number of students in the seventh and eighth grade at which it is just financially no longer practical to continue having a seventh and eighth grade? And so I'm again putting that for a third meeting discussion. While I'm writing this, my last thought that I want us to be able to just share out some words are, who are the stakeholders in this discussion? And when I say stakeholders, I mean anyone that is affected by this decision. So like, obviously, the students are affected by this decision. They are stakeholders in this. Parents are obviously stakeholders in this. So start thinking about it while I finish this question and then we'll shout out and I'll write them on the board so we have them. All right. In the essence of time, just start shouting out some things for me. We'll go a little chaotic here at the end. Everyone. Right. Community. Who else? More specifics.
Teachers.
Teachers. Who else?
Future students.
Future students. Who else?
Staff.
Staff.
The soul of our town.
Soul of our town. Yep, love it.
Property owners.
Property owners. Yep. Yep. Who else? Who else is affected by this?
Renters.
Renters. Yep. Taxpayers? Good. And as you can see, obviously, a lot of these labels overlap and that's okay. It's okay to like have these distinctions. So taxpayers. Yep, parents. Students. I want to know more about the animals answer. I love that.
Students with disabilities and other marginalized.
Students with disabilities. And marginalized students. Great.
I got one more. Every person the students educated here interacts with later in their life. So it's kind of like this.
Can I call it like ripple effect people? Yeah. Wee. Pay it forward. Ripple effect. Okay. So, friends, oh.
One of them on that list is, it's indirect of really importance, the state. What does the state government?
The state government. Yeah. Okay. So, my last thought as we wrap up, I want you all to think about this list and take a look at it. And then look around this room. Who from this list is not present here today? You don't have to shout it out. Just think about it. It is your task, my ask of you, as we move into this next meeting in December, which will be December 5th, 4th, something like that, around that, first week of December. How can we encourage more of these voices to be here? All right. So, bring people in and do that. As we move forward, the next meeting will have a very different format from this. It's not gonna be these small group discussions again. Sorry if you enjoyed this tonight. I'm gonna change it up on you. We will address these questions in particular, but probably a couple more as get generated then. All right. Keep talking about this. Right? This is important for a community. Yeah. One, two, three.
If the students are clearly a major stakeholder, are they welcome to these meetings?
Say, sorry.
If the students are clearly a major stakeholder, are they welcome to these meetings?
From my perspective as a facilitator, I am happy to have students here, especially, I would say, like, my experience working with kids is I would say, sixth grade and up, I would be happy to have here. Younger, if you think they, I'm like, I'm not gonna keep anyone out of this meeting. I'm not gonna be a gatekeeper here. I've worked with enough sixth through 12th graders that I think that they can handle, that I would value their, their voices in there. So I would say yes. So it's one then two.
I was just wondering if there's some way to get staff and teacher feedback within their school days so they don't have to work outside of their hours. Maybe they could have a teacher meeting or Google form or something where they could give feedback without being.
Yeah, I think, I'm gonna expand that to be even larger. If you are part of any of these groups and you know that some of these people like can't be here or it's a big ask for them to come, if you can, gather their feedback. And again, this is where we're starting to move past the speaking from your own experience. But like, if you have said, you know, if you've talked to a person who is a parent who can't be here, be like, okay, this parent wanted me to express this, staff, teachers, things like that. Yes, you can expand out on that. And then there was one over here. Yes.
So I am personally planning to come to all three meetings.
Yeah.
But I've been wondering, could people, if they come to all, if it will be of value for other people to come to another meeting? It sounds like we're talking, some of these, well, we're gonna do another meetings. It's based on what we talked here. So it sounds like it will be valuable for them.
Yes. My intention with the way that I'm planning on structuring these is that if you can make it to all three, awesome, you're a rock star. And I love rock stars. If you can only make it to one or if someone can, like, comes in in the middle, ideally, it should still be very valuable to them and their voices will still be very valuable and being heard at any point along the way. So I would absolutely encourage people to come even if they didn't make it to this one. Or if you're like, oh, I can't make it to the third one, that's okay. Still come.
Could you remind me of the dates and times of the next two meetings?
Board meeting, board members, can someone remind me?
It's the first Thursday of each month.
So.
So just, I think it's January 6th, I think it's the first Thursday.
January 1st.
Yeah, definitely not January 1st.
December 1st.
December 1st. And January 6th. Yeah.
The December 1st was the only one that starts at 6:30. We wanted to sort of just give people more time. This one was tight, but maybe the next one might be.
Okay. We are running over, so I'm gonna have this be the last thought.
I just want to mention what might be an elephant in the room. There was one, one group of stakeholders that potentially is in a difficult situation is stuff.
Is, sorry.
Is stuff. I mean, you've got, you've got the principal here, obviously, and so on. And I don't know whether it's possible for stuff to be here and be frank about how they feel about them. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's an excellent point. You know, we want to recognize that, that school staff may feel challenged in what they're, feel open to share in front of, you know, their bosses, right? Both the principal and the school board. So, yeah, thank you for acknowledging that. And we'll make sure to bring that up again at the next meeting and hopefully, you know, set some ways to encourage that to be open. So, all right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate you all being here. And I'll see you next month.